Please rise for like a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on our nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. There will be no budget transfers this month and the meeting, this meeting is being audio taped. I'd ask for a motion to approve the sets of minutes that you were given. Christopher Hansen in Abington, Secretary. Any discussion on the minutes? Singing in Hall of Fame. I'm like, change members. Student Advisory.
Hi.
Hi.
So first of all, I want to talk about what student council is doing or what we're planning to do because nothing is set in stone because we don't exactly know what's what hope take is leading. We don't know what we're actually able to do, but I'm going to explain to you our plan and our hopes for what we would like to achieve while following all the restrictions of COVID. So our first thing is we're going to try to create little goodie bags or care packages for sobriety houses for Christmas. That's one of our things we talked about at our meeting today because people don't really think when they think Christmas, they don't think to give to those places even though those people really do need it because they can't handle being out in society yet. And it's just nice to have a little extra something, something to make them feel better. So we're discussing that. And for shops, our horticulture program, which is what I'm in, we're having plant sales for Christmas and Thanksgiving. Obviously, social distancing still a thing. We're following all the regulations. We've been prepping them all week. We have a lot of things for sale. We're selling three different arrangements for Thanksgiving. I don't know exactly what because we haven't started making the Thanksgiving ones yet. That's what the sophomores and juniors are going to be doing next week, just so the flowers stay fresh. And then for Christmas, we're making kissing balls, wreaths, and tabletop Christmas trees. We've been doing those this week. We've been working on the wreaths and the tabletop trees, which will be for sale around Christmas time. And that's mostly what the school is doing so far. There is talk of sports. We don't exactly know the MIAA, but they're planning for football. And if we do have football, we're going to try to do some homecoming type thing, but as I said, we don't know what's coming. It all just depends on where the whole COVID situation will be in three months.
What, excuse me, what is the plan that we can do for football? What time, when or what month?
Not 13. Not 13th, I think, is on the first step?
Yes.
Are you doing Christmas trees again this year?
No, we can't have random people coming to the school.
Okay, all right, makes sense. I know somebody will ask me, so.
Yes.
Have an answer for them. Thanks, David. Anything else for us?
Hey, how do we place an order for like Thanksgiving Day arrangements and stuff?
We go to the South Chicago Tech website and there will be a link on the homepage.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, reports. Jim?
Thank you. Well, his follow up on faith and system of harmony, we do take credit cards over the info through the website so people can pay through PayPal on the website for the arrangements and so forth. So it's, whatever, makes it life easier for our consumers. October's, Treasury's reported a new package. The October's first deadline for the student enrollment piece that we normally work on is finalized to the best that we can finalize at this point. There's always a moving child somewhere along the way that started the year in one town and another town, and we're always coordinating those minor issues. But this is just a six-year, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven-year enrollment charge as far as where we are. We have, as of October 1st, 646 students in the building. So again, again, we've been stable the last three, four years, so it's been, it's been going well. The second pages are financial position, cash balances, as of October 31st. Overall, cash of above $5.8 million in our operating savings accounts. Our open account has about a $768,000 balance. So that's probably about $1,000 a month, $5,000 a month, so that's, that's going well. You can see that we're down a little bit from, from June. That's just a cycle of when we do our billing and so forth. Next page is our revenues for the month. Again, the only real revenue for October is, is our state aid, which is again coming through as block work without any issues. We do our billing for the second round of billing for our member towns happened on November 1st, and we also do the half, the half-year installment for our out-of-district towns as well on, on November 1st. So at the bottom, we have listed the out-of-district towns that we have in the building and what their, what their assessments will be for this, for this year. It's a little over, it's close to $1.6 million when we charge our out-of-district towns. And again, from a budget standpoint, we collect that money this year and then we use that $1.6 million next year to reduce our member towns assessment. So again, moving forward there, so everything's, everything's going across the garden, we saved a bunch of hands and so far, they're in the month of November. And our final page is our expenses. Again, this is throughout October, but overall, $938,000 is spent, majority in payroll. Everything's going smoothly. There's no, no great concerns with all the bills. Everything that's coming through is, again, normal business operations. We do have, again, COVID-related expenses that are being accumulated during the course of the year into the various budget categories as we move further through the year. We'll be overextending some of the repairs and other supply budgets based upon COVID, but we will then be able to turn around and build Plymouth County for a good chunk of those numbers as well. So we're moving forward. We have additional help from the state to cover some of our COVID-related costs as well. So everything else is going pretty smoothly, without any major issues.
Okay. Motion. Accept the President's report. Harrison Rockland, Secretary of State, co-adjournments. Any discussion on it? Any questions to discuss? All in favor? I'm like, move your hands. Motion, Gary. Okay.
One more. Just want to update the committee that, I mean, I talked to Dan before the meeting a little bit, but we've accumulated all of our COVID-related costs through the end of June. We've purchased a lot. We've been, you know, we're both in the process of ordering a lot of COVID-related items and we pretty much accumulated the number and then we turned around as of September 30th and we build our member towns for their share. Again, as the Plymouth County numbers in our design, this Plymouth County got their, got a chunk of the money. Now we build, we send a bill to Rockland, we send a bill to Sitchel, we send a bill to Abington for their share based upon the student population, and they will then go to Plymouth County, they'll get the money, then they'll give it to us. The non-Plymouth County towns, we're, we send them a bill to and then they'll, they'll be part of the state reimbursement piece of things. So again, it's working smoothly. We just haven't, our number is only around $100,000 for the, through September, only because a lot of the, a lot of stuff is backward. We haven't, we haven't received a lot. We've been, we've spent over $300,000 so far, but we just haven't paid for it yet because again, the orders are coming in, invoices are coming in. So there'll be a second round again of billing, a third round of billing that will go up, that will, will be sent continually sent billing to the, to Plymouth County for our share costs and so forth. So that's, that's on. So, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Tamlin. I have nothing to add on this, but on subcommittees, I do. The Capital Project Subcommittee met a couple times and we started out, we got 12, 15 applicants.
We had 12.
12 applicants for the OPM, which stands for Owner's Project Manager. Have to put that up because there's a couple other definitions there. And we narrowed it down to three and then the other day we met and had interviews with the top three candidates and number three didn't do that well in the interview, number, and it was overload. Number one and two were very close and we ended up picking P3, which is based on a Norwell on Long Water Drive. He's a resident of Hanover. He's very connected to the school and he gave some great answers, so we picked P3. Any questions on that? Three to one vote. What? Three to one vote. Oh, it was, yeah, it was three to one on the, on the vote.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just for, for members of the committee, when we, we voted in this fiscal '21 budget, this budget cycle included funding for an owner's project manager. The major thrust of the work will include window project this summer, hopefully. When I bring you a budget proposal next month, the main capital item I will bring you is funding for a window replacement project of this 1992 edition. This owner's project manager that Bob described will be working for us as part of that project as well as beginning the process of the design work for a roof replacement, which would not be something we would undertake any earlier than the summer of 2022. Those would be the major initial projects. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Tom, you ready to hear Superintendent Thompson's Director's report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Very briefly tonight, I'm joined by Sandy Wallen, who will provide a wealth of information about the goings on in school, but I would like to point out that the saying that necessity is the, is the mother of invention, we needed to make some adjustments on how we do recruitment and advisory meetings, and we did just that. We had very successful remote program advisory meetings in late October that were well attended. And we also most recently had a virtual open house on this past Saturday where we ran multiple tracks of webinars for prospective families and our tracking showed that we had approximately 150 families who participated. And it worked very well. Our teachers and administrators did an excellent job. Those who facilitated the meetings, those who presented, nearly all of the teachers wanted, even though it was virtual, it was remote, nearly all of our teachers came into the building so they could have their shop as a, as an authentic background for their, for their presentation. And despite all of the obstacles we faced with, with COVID, we are pleased to have over 180 applications in the queue for next year's freshman class and we are, and our, our admissions counselor and staff are conducting remote interviews. So we are, we are moving forward. So congratulations to all of our staff who, who did such a great job of open events. And Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it over to Sandy to provide some other updates.
Sandy, thank you. Tom, excuse me, Mr. Sullivan, you personally came to the back of your class, my apologies. I do have a fairly.
Got an echo?
Still getting bad reflection.
I do share a lengthy report because it's the opportunity to have you all into our buildings and to showcase some of those things during open house. Has, has not been an opportunity to speak, so I want to make sure you knew that we were alive and well here and in fact, I think we're thriving in what I would call a new normal. We are definitely facing challenges like all schools, but there's things that are really coming along and attacking the wrong things. So the first category is curriculum and credentialing. So MCAS is in fact on the horizon in January for our juniors who were unable to take their clock wars, which is the normal year they take it. The testing window is in late January for math and ELLA. This will result in a calendar change. We'll have to make some slight adjustments to make sure that the right students are in the, the building at the right time, but shouldn't be a major overhaul for us. I wanted to complement our remote learning subcommittee. This is a team of teachers who are really leading the charge in making sure that our educators have the instructional tools that they need to be teaching in a remote environment. Most of our teachers are teaching remotely every, every day or every other day. Our vocational teachers who are working hard in a very normal, normal, in, on campus every day, don't have the opportunity to teach remotely, but we have been working with them to give them opportunities to practice. And I can tell you that almost all of our vocational educators have taught 70-minute remote lessons as a model for what it would look like if we were to go remote. In addition, we created, by happenstance, an opportunity for all instructors to teach a half-day of remote instruction the day before Thanksgiving. So all those educators will practice with all of the new tools we put in place, the, the additional aspects of the Google platform, Goal Guardian to support teachers and students to be on task. We want to make sure that everyone had practiced those things if in the event we did have a short-term or a longer-term need to go remote. We don't feel that that's on the horizon, but we want to be prepared for it if it happens. And I want to thank those remote instructors, those mentors for making it happen. I also wanted to note also credentialing. Our cosmetologists now have four new licensed students, so they will be able to send some students out onto co-op. Our allied health program has the green light to start preparing for CNA testing, and once those students have their CNA license, they can get out onto co-op as well. So this is, this is great news for our school. We have some special projects happening. You are all, I'm sure, aware of the exciting news at the football field. We have lights out in the football field. Thank you to the electrical department with some support from our horticulture program. Carpentry is working on the new ticket booth that will house the switching for the lights on, so that's also exciting. So fun things, when COVID is over, this place is going to be hopping. Can't wait to see those lights on. In our metal fab program, they are working on four new steel dugouts for baseball and softball fields. We're making very good use of our downtime on our fields to let us marinate and be prepared for what our, our kids can actually go out Thursday to play. In HBIC, they're working on installing the remaining mini sweats for the AC in our, on our building, so that's good news. Faith really did a nice job highlighting some of the things that Horticulture is doing, but they're also working very hard on renovating our track, literally digging out the new track for us, and that's, they're working hard on that. They are doing the, the sales, which have closed for Thanksgiving, but will reopen again for, for Christmas arrangements for your, for your home. Couple of fundraisers and some donations to highlight. The Parent Association is doing a calendar fundraiser. There, it's a, for December, it's a $10 donation and you can enter for 31 separate drawings for some coupons and some gift cards for area establishments and your donation, you can have that in and through the end of this month, so through the end of November. Automotive, a pretty exciting news in automotive. They just received a gently-used 2019 diesel Chevy Silverado. It'll be used in their educational footprint. It's donated by Mass Bay Community College. They'll be able to do a lot of diesel work that they haven't, modern diesel work that they haven't been able to do on campus, so that's a really exciting opportunity for them. Polaris is doing pie day this year and we will be working, the students are, are doing the back of the house work and the staff is doing the front of the house work, making sure that we safely get those pies out to our community. We'll do that pickup next Wednesday. They're also changing their, 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 their method of getting food out to us. They're increasing their options for us here on campus. If you look behind, you know, we've got a coffee bar over here, which is a happening spot for faculty and, and a place that can sometimes be chilly these days. They're doing smoothies, some breakfast bowls, and make your, design your own pizzas, which they're doing by hand, hand-prepped in pizzas for us as well, so that's fun. Few other things and I will wrap it up. And I appreciate your attentive listening. This is a lot of talking without beautiful slides, so I appreciate it. Co-op is doing very well. As of the 17th, we have 62 seniors out. They're actively working on a co-op job. They've logged over 5,600 hours and they've earned over $86,000. Their average wage is $15.38 per hour, something really for the school to be proud of. We have changed our culture and their culture of seniors who will go to work and we find them the right work. We're pretty proud of that and the vocational office is making that happen. Finally, I want to talk a little bit about our school culture. We are coming back to life. We do have some virtual clubs. I am very excited that Dungeons and Dragons is meeting in the evenings. There's, it's a very, very vibrant active club at our school. Drama Club meets weekly with, Mr. Stevens rents the Dungeons and Dragons club. He really does a great job. He's very knowledgeable and the kids are, love working with him. The kids are even more knowledgeable. It's a, it's a, it's a new territory for me, I'm aware of that. Drama Club meets weekly with Mr. Bullwye and Mr. Henderson. National Honor Society is now up and running, meeting with Mrs. Palmer. We're going to try and work with those students to get them to work as peer coaches in the remote world for students who are struggling. And Student Council meets weekly, as you know, Mr. Palata. We are working on a virtual gaming club, and in fact, virtual gaming is an MIAA sanctioned sport. We even started as a club, we're taking a look at that as well. Pretty intense. That is all for now, and that's the way it was. So a short session, remember.
Thanks, Sandy. Go ahead, Cam.
All right, if I may. Last month, we had the county treasurer and Greg Hanley come to our town hall and present indeed with a reimbursement of COVID-19 funding that we used. And I was talking to Commissioner Hanley about South River Tech and, and agriculture and what we're doing, and he was so impressed that he said, you know something? Maybe they can, school can call me, give me his card, I'll present it to you. Maybe we can get, because the prison grows flowers and things like that, maybe we can work together and, you know, with Plymouth County and South River Tech and see if we can put something together. So I mean, it's just another, another step towards kids learning on something. So I'll give you Greg Hanley, Commissioner Hanley's card, and you can give a call and tell him that I, what we're talking about.
Great opportunity, thank you very much.
Sandy, I just wanted to say on my behalf and probably most of the committee, if not all, thank everyone for their hard work. I know it's difficult. I know it's crazy. I'm surprised anybody's got hair in their head.
I don't.
Well, you're, you're already pulled yours out, but you know, I appreciate all their hard work and trying to get through this year, so thank, thank everyone for us.
Honestly, a spectacular crew of teachers who have worked very hard. Like I said, we are now into the new normal phase of it. They've learned a lot and they are facing the challenges with Grace. It's a pleasure working with them.
Sandy, you said the question, it's the comment actually, is how well did the parent teachers' virtual, parent teachers' meetings go virtually?
Excellent. We had great attendance. It was a long day for our teachers because we, it was, it was a long go for them, a lot of meetings for them, but that's the good news, right? We, we worked our teachers maybe a little too hard for them, but it was very well-attended. Families amazed at the, the virtual meetings, no issues whatsoever.
Now, I know we don't have anybody coming into the school, but like we should have the colleges come in. Is there anything being done like virtually through guidance, through, that students can do here or?
Yes, and so the colleges reach out to us and let, let us know their timeframe for a virtual recruitment session, and then our students engage in that way. Yes, that's happening pretty regularly, yes. And in fact, I should have mentioned that Mr. Madera and Mr. DeHur, the guidance counselors, they're fantastic. Last Thursday, hosting a college information session for interested parents. They just did a general overview. They'll meet again to go do a deeper dive into FAFSA, provided a lot of really great information for families about this year and the differences in the college search process and the application process for this year, so they did a really nice job with that.
Good. Thank you.
Like I said, it's really the new normal, where everything's a little normal, right? A lot of things done a little differently, but coming along.
Beautiful.
And if I can make one comment, and I mentioned football lights, is that Superintendent Hickey was there to flip the switch for the inaugural turn on the lights, speaking as a football coach? It is well in. There are no shadows, there were no dark spots. It's a very proud project, I think, for the school and I think our students have got a benefit from it. Thank you, electricians.
Absolutely.
Can't wait.
Cannot wait.
That is Tom.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that's, that's all. Thank you.
Okay. Dan Salucci, if you could talk to us about the MASC conference?
Absolutely. This year was our 75th annual meeting of the Delegate Resolution Committee meeting. And just to let you know, the largest Zoom meeting I've ever been to, 142 people were on. It was insane. But anyways, there was 10 resolutions and just to make thing, all, any resolution that had to deal with the COVID-19 issue, right? Any resolution, those are temporary, right? The very, and they had like resolutions two, three, six, and eight, and nine were passed without discussion. There were basically boilerplate resolutions that were COVID-19 related and there was no issue. Resolution number one, which I spoke on, but one of the things, was to deal with the MCAS testing, right? What they're looking to do is delay it for three years due to the fact that they're feeling, they're feeling that teachers, kids aren't getting, get rid of this, a minute. Shut off. Kids aren't getting what they're used to getting and, you know, learning remotely and only coming to school a couple of days a week, so they thought the MCAS should be delayed or put on hold for three years. I agree with that, but the discussion on it was way past that. They thought it was a great way to end MCAS forever, and I think, and I made this statement that is not what this resolution's all about and you're using it for something different, right? That's something on a different scale that should be dealt with if that's how you feel when COVID-19 isn't a, a reason to do it, and they agreed. But, but I'm saying, all 10 resolutions, well, nine of them passed, one was held. Resolution four, this is the one that I put a hold on for discussion and dealt with kids that are eight, at 16, dropped the voting age for cities and towns to 16. And, you know, from 18 to 16. And my theory was, well, we tried that once with, with buying alcohol, dropping it from 21 to 18, and when they realized that it just didn't work, that the kids were still too immature, three years later, when the kids were 18, turned 21, that's when it stopped. I thought that that was a very poor way of looking at things as far as dropping the voting ages, the cities and towns, and I guess it would have to be passed through a town meeting. And I told them, I'm speaking not as a school committee representative, but as a chairman of the board of selectmen, saying that 16-year-olds, I don't know if, if that's the right age, my opinion, but there was, more people thought that it would be okay and it got passed. But as I said, all 10, nine resolutions passed, the 10th resolution had to deal with, let me see if I can. Oh, monitoring attendance of students during the pandemic, where some parents wanted to keep their kids at home because they were nervous about kids going to school or that they were ill, and parents have a right to keep them from not going to school, and that they felt that the schools should not hold the children at harm if in fact they didn't have documentation of why there was speed cap sake. We thought that that was something that needed to be dealt with a lot more deep and depth, and they tabled it. depth, and they tabled it because they didn't think it was at the right time to be talking about it. But that's basically it. And as they say, our meeting lasted three hours. It was a long meeting, but we got it all done. And as they say, all, nine passed, 10 was tabled, so that's it, basically.
So they took it in, night kicks are doing now. Don't worry.
Yeah. I'll get these.
All right, there are no warrants tonight. New business, Tom, I'm sorry, I jumped right over there.
That's okay, Mr. Chairman, no worries. I mentioned at the last meeting about debt authorization, and just wanted to make sure it stayed on the agenda. I won't go into too much detail, but I hope that by providing members of the committee who aren't necessarily on the capital project subcommittee, some handouts that, once again, try to show that our facilities master plan recommendations, coupled with some funding for a modest building expansion, is what will lead me to ultimately recommend to this full committee, probably sometime in late March or early April, to vote to authorize, to vote to support a debt authorization. Essentially, my rationale is that the expenses aren't going away, and this committee is well aware of the priority of places on maintaining the building. And we will continue with a strategy of applying to MSBA. But in the meantime, we've reached the point that we cannot sustain large capital projects in a single year's budget. A little earlier in this meeting, I mentioned that next month, I'm going to bring to you a budget proposal where the main capital item is going to be a window replacement. And that project will probably come in around $750,000, thereabouts. That's probably the last big capital project that we could do in a single year's budget. Everything else on the list, there are some that are small, but if you bundle them together logically, the rest of these items are more than $1 million, and it would be a budget buster to do in one year. So the strategy is by going to our communities in the spring 2021 town meetings, asking them, as they did in 2010, to support a debt authorization, which is what we did, about eight towns to support, to put a roof over our 1962, a replacement roof on our 1962 addition. This is the same approach, and what we would do is we would make sure that between now and late March, early April, we will have communicated with town administrators, boards of selectmen, advisory, and FinComs, so that they understand what we're looking to do. This is, this is not a strategy that has us borrowing all of this money all at once, but it does put us in a position that this committee and future committee meetings can make decisions, knowing that we would have some resources. At the end of the day, even with a debt authorization approved from our eight towns, we still have to make every year's budget work for our towns. So going from having no debt, which is where we will be in fiscal '22, we will have no debt on the books in fiscal '22. But in fiscal '23, should everything go in this direction, we will be putting a roof over this addition in the summer of 2022. And in order to pay for that, a debt authorization would be necessary. So again, the document I provided you is simply a laying out where these numbers are coming from. We're going to need to do a little more work on the numbers, but I'm looking at something that could be in the range of $17 to $20 million. It may actually be the lower end of that range, as I'm encouraged to tell you that our engineers point out that a lot of the electrical work that has been recommended, the infrastructure, the replacement of fixtures and the installation of lighting controls could be done by our own students, as well as a portion of the addition. So I don't want to put a price tag on it, but there was at least a $3 million recommendation that we possibly could cut in half by eliminating labor costs and only covering materials. So when I know that's closer to factual, I'll lay it out in greater detail. But the bottom line is, we want to have the resources to, in a smart, targeted way over the next several years, get into that next category of capital improvement, and we will utilize the resources of our in-house talents to help keep the costs down. So for right now, this is just still the beginning stages. I would like to continue to make more detailed presentations, provide you with more information, but ultimately bring to you a recommendation in the spring. Why the spring? Because once this committee votes a debt authorization, it has to notify our eight towns within seven days, and then our respective towns have 60 days to take up the matter at a town meeting. It would make, it would make good neighborly sense that we would not prematurely take this vote and thus start a 60-day clock ticking when we know our communities have their town meetings mostly in May and in June. So that's why an early April vote should be able to cover all of your respective communities' scheduled town meetings. But by then, with a draft article, which I'd like to have a draft article, it's a very simple article. If you were to go back to some old town meeting warrants, you could find the warrant article from 2011, which approved the roof project over the 1962 addition. It's a paragraph authorizing the regional school district to borrow. So the approach would be similar. So for now, more conversation, more detail, leading to a vote in the spring. Go to our town meetings in May and June, and then the committee now has access to funding that we can build in to future budgets. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dan?
Question, yes. The window project, the $750,000 or around there, that'll be covered in our budget as far as we have the money to pay for that?
Yes.
Or we'll be assessing the towns?
That's, so Dan, yeah, that would be, the fiscal '22 budget, the headline or capital item will be that project.
Okay.
So that will be baked in, so the project will be done, ideally will be done in the summer of 2021.
And paid for.
And paid for. And so beyond that project, that's when we, I think we graduate into the category of roof projects, ventilation, et cetera.
That larger project that we need to take a meeting on, have a town meeting on, I know the town of Whitman is looking at building, looking at building a middle school. I know we're doing a, we have our town meeting, we're going to call for a town meeting for of course Maine, Sioux Maine, from Whitman to Rockton, because it's like 40 years old, the original, and it has to be replaced because it's getting damaged. When do we expect, if we have a town meeting on this to approve it, where, I know my town will have two large projects online, and we need all eight towns to approve it, right? I'm wondering, when is the best time? Do you see us getting any aid from the state on this main project, the large project?
At this time, I would say no. If MS, we will continue to apply to MSBA. If MSBA, if MSBA were on schedule, Dan? They would be telling us, as they have in the last five Decembers, they would be telling us next month how we did on the application we submitted back in April 2020. I think their schedule is a bit off. But even if they said yes to us, it would be, it would be three or four years, as we know from seeing MSBA projects in our own communities. But is there the potential for that? Yes. So a staggered approach to our capital improvements makes financial sense in the short term because borrowing such a large sum of money and then divvying it up would get in the way of operating the schoolhouse. We can't, we could not afford to do it. So we have to move forward, but we should move forward with priority projects. And then if MSBA comes, yes, there would be some help.
What can we do to nudge as MSBA, to possibly look at our project and approve it? Are state reps, can they get involved, or...
We have sought and secured their support in the form of writing letters. It's never a bad thing. I will, I would always copy our legislative delegation on our pursuits, and in normal years, our legislative breakfasts, we have highlighted that with our, so I feel like our delegation is certainly well informed. The MSBA decision-making process, as we're told year in and year out, is merit-based, and they have, they have teams of engineers that are looking at which schools are truly the most needy, and we know the refrain here. We maintain our building, so we're not all, we're not, it's going to, with scarce dollars, we are not going to be at the top of the list. Now, some years, it seems, I feel like we're close.
You would think they would reward us.
Right. So there's definitely more work to be done, but we're definitely in the awareness raising and educating phase for our towns with regard to this. But again, at the end of the day, if we got this approved in the spring of 2021, and we then take the next six to nine months to, let's just pretend the next big project is going to be the roof. We design it, we go up to bid, we've got our town's support to borrow money, we go and do that, Jim does the calculations, and then in the following year, as we get ready for fiscal '23, that's when the debt service column on the assessment chart that Jim would put out, that's where you would see the breakdown. So at the end of the day, okay, so if it's a $2 million or $3 million roof project, my town's share is going to be X. And at the end of the day, it's going to, our towns will support us, I believe they will, but they need to know that every year when we bring them an annual assessment amount, is it affordable? So we are mindful of that, and we don't see this as a big money grab all at once. It's, that would not be wise or affordable.
Right, exactly. Okay.
Tom?
Can you, is that out of district money?
Yes, and so...
Like a portion of it, maybe not all of it, but a portion of it?
Yes, the out of district, well, the good news with that, Chris, is that the out of, the non-resident tuition money is used to help reduce our assessments. And I think that's, that's been, that has definitely been very helpful. So we, the non-resident tuition money, the regional transportation reimbursement money, Chapter 70, those are, and miscellaneous income from, you know, interest-bearing accounts, that is, that's all on our revenue side. When we build our budget, we try to be very conservative where we think the revenue is going to come from. We assume level-funded Chapter 70. We keep, you know, as Jim said earlier, we keep close tabs on the non-resident tuition revenue. But the short answer is yes, it's a, it's a, it's revenue that can help offset to the eight-member towns.
Excuse me, Tom, didn't you already send out like a point memory letter to the town administrators?
Yes, that's correct. I did, I did, as a courtesy, want to alert the respective town administrators that we were, we were brainstorming this, and that we just don't want people to feel caught off guard or surprised. And we know where we're going in front of most of our communities to talk about an annual budget. It would be my hope this year that through the power of Zoom, or Google Meet or otherwise, that I would have an opportunity to dialogue with each of our eight communities, even if it is, again, even if the focus is just about this, an upcoming debt authorization. I know from living in the district that communities do have placeholder articles. So when a spring town meeting warrant gets opened by the board of selectmen, that's the opportunity where the town begins to focus attention on which articles. So my hope would be that even though I wouldn't ask this committee to vote on a debt authorization until the spring, as a courtesy for that 60-day window, I certainly would want to have numbers, rationale, and a draft article available for town administrators and selectmen to be able to put as a placeholder in a preliminary warrant, where it would sit and be deliberated upon as we get a little bit deeper into 2021. So if all of those things fall into place, and people understand what we're trying to do, I think they would be supportive. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. There are no warrants tonight, correct? Oh, we do have one, okay. I thought I said no warrant. Okay.
I'm looking at five here, and I'm like, I don't know.
Oh, knock yourself out.
Warrants eight, 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 nine, nine, eight, and nine, M, totaling $1,474,187.00. Second.
Second, if I situate. Any discussion on the warrants?
You motion a second?
No, he did it.
He makes the call.
Oh, I got it, okay.
No discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous, motion carried. Are there any requests for action? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Sal, who's back?
Second.
Second situa, yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Yep. Bingo, we're done.